Well, good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the June 5th edition of the Umatilla County Commissioners Board of Commission Meeting for 2024. I do want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded both via audio and visual, and we also are following state law and are doing a hybrid meeting option. But any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
Um, I just want to recognize the Umatilla County Sheriff's Department. They were in the Weston Parade, Pioneer Picnic Parade, I think is what it's called, anyway. Wonderful display, and so, thank you. Well, well done.
I have nothing today.
Prove all the minutes, do we have the previous minutes? Any additions to the agenda? No, no. At this time, we'd recognize the public for any input for not something that's not on the agenda. So if you want to address the board, now is your time to do so. Anything in the room or online? With that, our first item is CDA agenda, and I see the CDA folks are on the line. And I don't know if Greg is going to be getting it today, or who. I will turn it over to the Columbia Development Authority. Debbie, I see here, are you able to hear us, Debbie?
Good morning, everybody. Yes, I do believe Greg is on the line as well. And he's going to present this morning.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
Uh, yes, Greg is on the line, I believe, and he is going to present this morning.
I just admitted him. Okay.
Awesome.
I think I just admitted you, so if you're ready, we are ready for you. And you're muted. There it is.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Do I hear you're ready for me?
We are. We had just turned it over to you. I didn't know if you were on yet or not. So it is, we are looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
I bet. So, uh, good morning, gang. For the record, my name is Greg Smith, Director of the Columbia Development Authority. And Commissioner and Commissioners appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. Let me begin by sharing with you, as we start off, Debbie and I, as staff to the Columbia Development Authority and Mr. Chair as staff to you in particular, we feel like, we feel like children kind of caught in the middle of a divorce. And so, at the end of the day, your staff, using a kind of a crummy analogy, we love each and every one of you. Let me give you updates on where we are and what we're trying to do. So as you Commissioners know, but perhaps the public does not know, back in March, a motion was made, really, at the last minute, without myself or without any other staff members of the CDA knowing a motion, knowing the wording of a motion was presented in which, in a three to two vote, the real estate was divided to the two ports. The land on the Umatilla County side in the motion was to go to the Port of Umatilla. The real estate on the Morrow County side was to go to the Port of Morrow. The two ports voted in the affirmative. Morrow County voted in the affirmative. Commissioner, Mr. Chair, as you know, Umatilla County voted in opposition, and so did the Confederated Tribes of Umatilla. For the record, I want to be very, very clear for a period of time, and I don't know exactly. I'm just going to say 90 days. It could have been a little less, could have been a little more. I knew a motion was coming forward, but I also want to be very, very clear. I had never seen the motion. I'd never read the motion until, gosh, I don't know, 90 seconds before the conversation occurred. And as a matter of fact, if I recall, the copy I had of it, I handed over to Commissioner Dorn because he did not have a copy and had not seen it. With that said, we're, the CDA is operating in this unique area in that we have a handful, and when I say a handful, five very, very legitimate business opportunities from a natural resource manufacturing company to a large utility company that's not looking at solar, but at other energy opportunities. We do have alternative energy companies. We do have a data center inquiries, of which Debbie and I are meeting with an individual here in the next day or so. And so we're sitting here in this unique situation of trying to determine how to proceed. This is where it gets a little dicey, and I'll do my very best to describe it. Your staff has received, has, a motion has been made. A motion has been passed, and so staff is proceeding forward, but also fully understanding that Umatilla County has forwarded a stop order, and I think my legal terminies may be a little rough on that, but effectively a stop order saying they believe, you believe, excuse me, that the vote was in violation of the bylaws. And I would share with the public and with you, Commissioner, and I've shared this with others, an argument can be made that that is accurate. If one looks at the bylaws, there's language in there that talks about that consensus shall be reached, or, and I don't have it right in front of me, but effectively it says, everyone shall work in an effort to reach consensus on decisions. And I think an argument could be made that that was not honored.
Stop it for a second. I want to say that you're calling it bylaws, but I want to make it clear. It was an intergovernmental agreement, signed by all five members.
That, yeah, that is correct. That is correct. Yep, yep. You guys are actually my first meeting this morning, so my terminology may be a little rough. But Commissioner, that is correct. And so, staff is operating in this, in this unique position in that we do not want to lose these economic development opportunities. At the same time, we recognize that there's not consensus among the board and that there's potential legal action that is forthcoming. So that, that's the primary issue before the board. With that said, we have secondary issues that, from a staff perspective, are equally as important. And that is the full board in the past has, in consensus, agreed to certain obligations, of which preservation of the Oregon Trail is one of them. Preservation of an eaglet is another. Division of non-property assets needs to be managed. Acquisition of adequate insurances. Making sure that implementation of safety plans are coordinated, et cetera, are being carried out. And each of those has unique deadlines that need to be met. And so it's putting a tremendous amount of stress on Debbie as administrator, trying to complete these, and rightfully so. And again, please know Debbie and I are the children in a divorce. We rightfully so can see the position that the two members who voted in opposition would be taking, and that is, we're not contributing until we know you know what the outcome's going to be. So that puts, that puts staff in a unique situation, but we will figure out how to navigate through that. The reason for the tremendous amount of stress that comes with that is, one, we have an obligation. I'm going to see if I can stop this hammering that's outside. One sec here. See if I can stop it. Oh, there we go. Hopefully they'll stop for a few minutes. But the grant that the Columbia Development Authority relies on for its operations really is at stake. These deadlines need to be met. Should we not meet them, we fully anticipate that the Office of Economic Justment, the folks who fund us, will not fund us in the future. So this is kind of the situation we're facing. The one thing that I've asked Debbie and Emily and our engineer of record, Fred, to do is to make sure that we are not communicating on this issue directly with any one of the board members or alternates. And I've asked Schwab, Williamson, and Wyatt, Elizabeth Howard, to communicate regularly and openly and transparently with each of the legal counselors of the five board members. The reason I've done that is I will provide any and all information to each and every one of the five members. I'll provide information to each and every one of the alternates. I'll provide information to the media. The challenge we have is we don't want to be found in a situation of the deliberation on how the outcome's going to play through. And so what we're hoping, Mr. Chair, is that Umatilla County's legal counsel will take the steps it needs to protect itself and navigate that through with the legal counsel of Schwab. So that's a lot I've thrown at you in 12 minutes. There's much, much more that we could share. On a pos, on a positive note, I can share with you, today, your books are reconciled. They balance to the penny. I could share with you that we are keeping our business leads at the forefront in terms of trying to make sure they have all the information they need. One of, let me, and I know I'm jumping around, so please forgive me. One of the issues, though, related to that is, Mr. Chair, you'll recall, we had an energy company that was prepared to purchase 100 acres that transferred to a lease option. Then the direction back was a purchase option, and that company's ready to proceed very shortly, and it's putting staff in a unique situation because we want to make sure we're honoring all five board members, and we do not know how to proceed at this point. So, but I can tell you, Mr. Chair, is about everything I know. And I do my very best to answer any questions, but I think I've tried to share with you everything, everything I can tell you.
Thank you. Any of the other board members have any questions for Mr. Smith?
Greg, I really appreciate you coming and going through that. I really do. Early on, you made the comment that at this time, without knowing what the legal outcome's going to be, you said that you guys were still moving forward. What does moving forward kind of entail?
Yeah, yeah. Excellent question. Excellent question. Trying to make sure we're allowing access to the property for due diligence by these companies. Fully, I just want to be clear, gang. Fully understanding. I, I do not have a path forward today if one of them says, here's our offer, accept it or do not. I bring it forward to the five. Do I take it to the two? And what I'm hoping is, is that Umatilla County Legal Counsel and, and the other four counselors and Schwab will give us direction on what that means. But Dan, or Commissioner, just to be really candid, I, legally, I don't know how to proceed today. As your director, I would tell you, my goal would be for everyone to come together and work together. But I'm staff. I'm not a board member, and that's where I sit today.
Thanks, Greg. That's a great answer. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I too appreciate you coming and giving us an update. Of course, I pretty much knew everything you said, but I'm just glad that everybody else got to hear it. And I'm going to repeat my mantra that I've been saying since March 26th. If we rescind that vote, we're going to move forward as one big happy family. But until that vote gets rescinded, I don't see good things happening.
Yes, sir. I hear you, Commissioner. And I, and I just had to be very clear. If I was representing Umatilla County, my position would not be different. I do not sit in that position, and as staff, your staff is in this unique area that I don't think many people have found themselves in before.
Actually, we did, four years ago, and then the vote was rescinded in the
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Of the region. And actually, that didn't happen this time, so.
Yeah, that's, you know, you are correct, Commissioner. That was, and that's, that's a fine point I do have to raise. At the end of the day, staff is going to be directed by the board, and I'm hoping that folks can come together and reach a resolution that will be acceptable to all five members and will be in the interest of consensus.
Agreed. Agreed.
Yeah. And I, just as, just as a citizen, I would just share with folks that without collaboration among all five, it's going to be hard for anyone to do anything by themselves anyway. And so collaboration really is a strong, strong instrument in this type of development.
Agreed. Not agree. All right. Well, thank you very much. If there's no further questions, we thank you and Debbie, and Emily's on as well, so thank you all for joining us. We appreciate your time.
All right. Take care, gang. Feel free to reach out anytime. We'll tell you what we know. Take care, gang.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Item number two, budget adoption. Oh, I'm sorry. So we're going to spend our regular meeting, go into public hearing mode with that.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County. Back in April, we met with our appointed Budget Committee, some lay members, and you, you discussed the budget for the 20th, June, July 1/24 to June 30/25 budget for Umatilla County. With some adjustments, the proposed budget was approved at that meeting, and before you today is the adoption. Adjusted budget.
Any public comment in favor of? Any public comments in opposition of? Neutral? None at this time. We'll close the public hearing mode, and we will go back and resume our regular meeting. And wishes of the board.
I would like to, first of all, say thank you to Finance Department, the Budget Committee, all involved in a very complicated budget. So thank you guys for a lot of hard work. Circumstances to put it together, but you guys did a great job. Budget hearings were very complete, and thanks to all the department heads for their presentations, too. So with that said, I would like to adopt order number 2025-01.
Got a motion of second in the discussion? All fair and motions say aye?
Aye.
Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I echo what Commissioner Norton said about your staff and you. Had a big chore. It had to be you guys, and not only that, but a short time to do it. One pause. Thank you. Item number three, Ukiah Rodeo Permit. Figured that's why you were here.
All right. My name's Carl Jensen. I'm from the Ukiah Rodeo. We have a ranch in Ukiah. As you know, this will be our third year to present, and it's grown every year, and it's been a big economic impact for the community around there. So this year, we're filling out another mass gathering permit. We have that. We are in the process of working with your planner to incorporate that ground into better use, so we don't have to go fill out this permit this year, but you know, it takes time. Anyway, that's about it. You have any questions for me?
I want to thank you for the hard work that you and all the other volunteers are doing to put on such a great event in Ukiah, so it's a perfect, great event.
We'd love to have you there.
I have it on my schedule, so we're hoping to come.
Well, then look one of us up so we can recognize us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve the permit for outdoor mass gathering for the Prairie Cowboy Convention.
Second. Wish a second. All fair and motions say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks. Item number four, ODOT grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. For record, Megan Napekki, Umatilla County Planning Manager. The county received a grant from ODOT to inform the Highway 11 CG Focus Group. This funding was awarded for April through September of this year, and ODOT has recently opened up requests for the next grant cycle, which is October 1st of 2024 through September 30th, 2025. Planning staff are requesting to continue the outreach in Sheriff's Office overtime along Highway 11 and Milton Freewater. Provide funding for marketing driver safety and provide overtime funding for the sheriff's patrols. If awarded, the grant requires a 20% match from the county, which can include in-kind match. Staff are requesting approval for in-kind match and the amount of $4,500 and $3,000 cash match. This is about equivalent to our current grant.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. The comment I have is, I appreciate everything that you guys have done. Lot of after-hour meetings, lot of presentations. You guys made a very, very big dent in the community concerns just by answering a lot of questions, implementing this, and thank you to the Sheriff's Office for the number of volunteers for the overtime.
I have a question. On this marketing driver safety, how's it going to be done?
So our first Safety Focus Group meeting is next week, actually, and so that group is made up of Highway 11 residents. And they're going to tell us the type of marketing messaging that they want us to push out. So our idea is a billboard on Highway 11, radio ads, social media ads, newspaper, maybe even TV ads. But that's our idea, is that they'll tell us, you know, the best way to spread the message to local community. And then whether that's driver impairment, distracted driving, you know, with the text messages that they want us.
I would move for approval to the grant request and the matching funds from Umatilla County.
Wish a second. All fair and motions say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, Travel Oregon Grant.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Karen Walshley with Umatilla County Tourism, and I'm here to seek approval on a contractor grant that is part of a accessibility grant that we were awarded from Travel Oregon. We're working in conjunction with Eastern Oregon Visitors, so I'm patient on this, on more of a regional development. And this contract is for site visits. We have, we've already held workshops for local businesses to come and kind of get aware of mobility issues and sensory issues for people that travel. I personally have some family members that really have to scope out their travel issues when they come. And through this grant process, we're working with local businesses to help bring awareness to people when they're traveling and, and the benefits of being able to help people with mobility issues. So in essence, what this contract is, is for Ashley to come to the businesses to talk with them. She will do a report that will be submitted to us, and then this allows them to have that report as well to maybe go after, you know, funding or revisions on stuff. But it also allows them to be put into what's called BluePath.org. It's a travel site, a travel information site that we will be using regularly and statewide to help people with accessibility issues when they travel.
The first question I have is, does this interact with the grant that we gave to Darren Amberger for this, kind of the same thing?
In essence, somewhat. No, it is not the same thing, but we did utilize Darren Amberger and his, as a panelist when we had a workshop here. So he is aware, we've brought him on as, you know, some advice and his stuff, and he's been a great resource for us.
I didn't realize how important that was until I sat down and had a visit with Darren. And I realized that people, when they do travel, they get to where they're going, and then, like he commented about going into the rodeo grounds here, at one point, he could not get in there. And how does heart need? And so there's people that travel and could go to these certain destinations, and once they get there, they can't see what they want to see. So anyway, he was a, he was great information on that.
Yeah.
Entertainer motion.
I'd move to approve the Travel Oregon expense of $22,536.
Motion second. All fair and motions say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Number six, Project Letter of Support.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Community Development Director. This request before you is for a letter of support for a grant that Umatilla County resident Kent Madison and his company Three R Valve is working on with the Idaho National Laboratory. The grant is with the US Department of Energy and would explore the feasibility of aquifer pumped hydropower and hybrid microgrid evaluation in our region to be able to expand energy storage. I did a little research on this, and basically my understanding is it would utilize existing wells and through the pumping of water, generate kinetic energy that would then be stored on microgrid and available for reliability of our transmission line systems. Possibly if there was a power outage in a community, they could then tap into that power for emergency response, things like that. So there's no financial commitment from the county tied to this agenda item. It's just the letter of support for the grant. My program views it as a good My program views it as a good economic development opportunity.
One thing I have to say is I'm a big believer in hydro energy pressure. And there's getting to be more and more innovative ways to do it, whether it's full storage. This this is a really unique method that could be scaled up extremely quickly in our in our area. It's just like irrigation dishes, but if you're that have hydroelectricity, but aquifer and pump. It's actually, it's it's pretty proven technology. Just we we don't have a lot here yet, so I am very much in favor of.
I know that they've got some hydro projects going on down in the gorge.
Okay.
And and I have not heard how successful they are, but I know that they've got those going. It was interesting to me, this actually was brought about in the 1970s. And because of technology, they put it aside. And now they're to the to the point because technology is where it is, that they brought it back out and and made it feasible. I think that's very interesting.
Yeah, it's it's got more. It's got a very lot of potential, just like micro hydro generating facilities and irrigation dishes. Pipes and pipes and pipes, but also cooling. Cooling is probably the most popular method right now, but as it's
I understand that there's ways that they could utilize recharge projects to generate this. And then to your point, Commissioner Timmins, on advancements in technology, we're seeing a lot more in the way of battery storage. So now they have more efficient ways, I guess, to store this power that's being is for reliability.
Thanks for bringing that forward. I would move for approval of the letter of support. And authorize the chair to sign.
So second, I'll put the motion say aye.
Aye.
Number seven, feasibility study.
Yep. This next proposal is for a contract with Strategic Development Department that's been working with the Strategic Network Group in West County cities now for a few months. On a concept for improving digital infrastructure, grow our local economies, enhance access to online broadband. Believe it or not, there's still a significant portion of unincorporated Yumitila County that does not have access to broadband. You would think, you know, with our data centers and whatnot, we would have more access even in the west part of the county, but that's not true. There there's still over 4,500 households unserved or underserved just in West Yumitila County alone. To broadband. So funding for this feasibility study would be paid through our Economic Development Reserve Program and would be matched by West County cities as well. Ultimately, if the feasibility study demonstrates that this model is viable, we would look at applying for BEEF funding potentially. And then the consultant has also indicated to us that if it's something that could be viable for the west part of the county, they may be able to look at solutions to expand it to the whole of Yumitila County. That, are there any any questions about this?
So I asked this yesterday. We want everybody else to hear the question. My question to you was, does this benefit the cities more or the counties more and or the county more?
Yeah. So I think I think the goal of the feasibility study is to determine whether or not this is going to be a viable model. And what the potential financial need would be to make broadband available to all the cities and the county. There are several broadband providers that are currently installing broadband in the cities, but it's still not known whether or not that's going to cover, you know, like a Echo or a Stanfield. And it's my our understanding currently is that those broadband connections aren't going to extend outside the city. So you still have a significant amount of the population that isn't able to access broadband or, you know, conducting activities like participating in this public meeting, for example, or doing teledoc visits or school programs online. So there really would be a lot of advantages economically that we believe would come out of this, but I think the feasibility study will help determine a kind of economic model.
Cities, you mentioned the west end cities. Have they all said yes that they're going to work this project?
Yeah. So especially the larger cities, we have commitments from Hermiston, Yumitila, as well as Stampedale and Echo have indicated a desire to participate. So I don't know those exact dollar figures yet. I think that's being determined. But but it would equal R15. That's my understanding.
So I don't know if the other two have any questions.
I have all sorts of questions. I marked up there, book all over the place. And so I guess the bottom line would be I would like to know. You know, they say that they're unique in the way they do things. I would like to know how. I would like them to just answer the questions that they put in their pamphlet in their proposal. Yeah. And as far as key stakeholders would be, you know, who would that be? And you know, community benefits from digital infrastructure, how is that going to be important? And I'm sure that this study, that's exactly what it's going to do is answer all of those questions.
Yeah. I can speak to some of that where I didn't write the proposal. I I don't know everything that would go into it on the consultant's side. But my understanding is when you're talking that other partners, they would be exploring whether or not there's interest from like the hospital, for example, or the school districts, other entities, local governments that would be interested in participating in this. Then in turn, they could get their customers or clients online broadband. So that's just one example. Obviously, after COVID, you know, we've seen a lot more. I think it kind of can make it, you can make an economic case for it as well. There's a lot of businesses that have moved to home models and so providing that access. I I think that's who a lot of the local partners is like hospital.
Well, I'm just interested to see, you know, what they come back with.
No, I I've been involved. I don't want to take up any more time, so I'm not going to say a basic thing.
Well, then in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the contract with Strategic Network Group payment.
Got a motion, a second, all fair and the motion say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I think I'm looking at the clock. We do have to suspend this meeting and make our way to the VERT auditorium for a public hearing. So with that, we will suspend this meeting and we will reconvene at the VERT for a meeting beginning at 10 a.m. Thank you.